Order.
Randy recording.
Uh, I am recording right.
Okay. So I am Paul Peltier. I am the chairman of the Plan Commission. And we will start out tonight with a roll call. Hello will do that. And as he does it, if he can introduce people who are here in the room. And then you can see on the screen, the members of the Plan Commission who are participating.
By Zoom. And so we have Chairman Pelteers here in person. We also have a Plan Commission member, Prop. As you can see, we have Mr. Martinson, Mr. Schwabs, Mr. Williams, and Mr. Luther, who are Plan Commission members. We are missing Mr. Cook at this point to the meeting. Um, from staff, we also have Randy Ivy and John Dahl, Randy Ivy's Director of Public Works, John Dahl Building Inspector. I'm Lowell Prang and the City Administrator. Uh, from our consulting staff, we have Charlie Jones and Wendy Stander from Wendy Stander from Cedar Corporation. Easy for me to say, and also Ben Ludeman representing the City Attorney's Office. And four members of the public currently are attending the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Lowell. Yep, thank you for reminding you to hit the mic there. You'll probably be doing that again through the evening. So next up is approval of the minutes from our May twenty sixth meeting. If those minutes were in the packet. Is there a motion on the minute?
I'll move a rule.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve made by Mr. Croft. And a second from Dave. Thank you. Any discussion? Not all in favor of approving the minutes as published, say aye.
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 Any opposed? So those are approved. Tonight, we have three public hearings. The first public hearing is a preliminary general development plan. Review of Eastover Terrace on a twenty-nine point oh five acre unplanted parcel. Lying southeast of the southerly terminus of Seventeenth Street East. And we will do this, starting out with an introduction to the project from Randy Ivy. Then after we have an introduction about some of the facts and figures of the project. Then we'll open up the public hearing. And what I'll do is if there's members of the public here in the room who wish to speak. I'll make the first speaker someone who's in the room. Then we speak in random order. Then I'll take it to the Zoom and give someone who's the top of the list their opportunity. We'll bounce back and forth between in-person and Zoom. Uh, just to review a few things about our procedure for public hearings. And this is a procedure that we've had since twenty thirteen. In order to allow the largest number of people to testify, we adopt the following procedure. The party or group requesting the zoning change or PUD will be the first speaker at the hearing. There'll be no time limit for the applicant to make his or her initial presentation. Members of the public will speak in random order. The time limit for each person will be five minutes. And the Plan Commission will not respond or ask follow-up questions during the public hearing. This is our time to listen to the public and we will be taking notes. We may then any member of the Plan Commission can ask follow-up questions later on. So stand by. Commission members may ask for clarification. And violent, abusive, indecent. Otherwise disorderly conduct may cause the speaker to forfeit the remainder of their speaking time. And I've only had to do that once in more than ten years that I've been the chairman of the Plan Commission. So we're here to talk about the future of our community. We're not here to talk about personal attacks or that kind of thing. So with that, we'll turn it over to Randy for an introduction to the project.
Uh, Mr. Chair, do you just want to wait a minute? I see Mr. Cook is just getting a seat.
Sure.
Tonight.
But it's too bad.
Won't repeat myself. That's okay. Okay.
Um. Yeah, but you've got your slides.
Yeah, I'm gonna start the screen sharing here.
Yeah, so for the public. Plan Commission member Cook has joined us now. I apologize, I had Wi-Fi issues, so I'm sorry about that. But if there was an alternative, we'll get through it.
So if I may, Mr. Chair, so what the Plan Commission has before them and for this public hearing is a preliminary general development plan for Estover Terrace. Um, this is a twenty-nine acre site. Um, the developer is looking at a hundred and fifty-five apartments. Uh, fourteen twin homes and six single-family homes. And up on the screen, I believe everybody, at least online, should be able to see that. I just want to give a general idea of where the area we're looking. And then I'll go back to, I'll go to the maps and show the building units that are proposed. Um, and I also want to say this was introduced at the City Council and referred to the Plan Commission for your recommendation. So it is generally, if you can follow my cursor, is in this area right here. And that borders on Seventeenth Street, which is uh, north and south is one point to reference. The Red Cedar Speedway or the Dunn County Rec Park is up to the north, Dancing Oaks to the north. And Eleventh uh, Avenue comes in off of Twenty-first Street and that'd be another connecting point. According to the PUD. So it's this area in general. And then I'm gonna I'm gonna go to one more set. And the proposal, again, it should be up on your screen here in a, in a second. Here is Seventeenth Street on the top left of the co- of your page. And the bottom right is Eleventh Avenue. And you can see the connecting road coming through and also a road going to the south. Future road or proposed road going to the south. We have five eight-plexes. Up on the northeast corner. And in the middle section is proposed uh, eight twelve-plexes. And as you move further to the west, you have the twin homes. Up to Seventeenth Street. And if you go further south, single-family homes, six of them proposed at this time. Um, this is a general PUD again, that is brought to the Plan Commission for a recommendation as part of our ordinance. This would be a public hearing, which is coming up next. And then that would go, your recommendation would go to the City Council. They are scheduled to have a public hearing on July twentieth. That's July twentieth. There's also a rezoning that matches this that's further along in your agenda. And I think when we get to that rezoning, we can probably talk about that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So first question.
And if if I just may on the, on the public hearing, if I just may for the, for the public. That's online. Um, when the chairman does open up the public hearing, if you can raise your hand, we'll see you up on the screen. And that hand will be raised in the order that you hit it. Um, I see Jean Foley's up on the top right now. And if you're on a cell phone, it should be star nine. If you're on your computer, if you open up the participants panel or and hover near the bottom, you should have a raise hand option. Or maybe near the bottom of your screen should be a raise hand option. So if you wish to speak, just raise your hand. And I think the chairman will take you in the order they're queued up. If he can't see it out, we'll, we'll rep. We'll remind them who's first and who's next to speak. So. And uh, we'll take you in the order the chair picks you. Yeah, and, and for the people on, in the public, and we're gonna ask the same here. We got a few in the, in the audience here. Please give your name and address. And just as clear as you can do it, we're gonna try to write that down as quick as we can. Uh, Mr. Lowell Prang is gonna be writing it down. So if we get your name and address before you speak, that would be helpful.
And and one thing, as far as introducing yourself, give Lowell the name and address. That does not count for the speaker's time. So don't try and rush through that. Give Lowell what he needs because he's got the flag over there. And if he doesn't have the information he needs, everything stops until he's got his record complete. So then after that, we would start the timer. And I do have the yellow board here that I'll show when there's thirty seconds remaining. And just so that people can know where they are. Randy, is there someone here from the development group?
Uh, there is. Uh, Mr. Trevor Boland is here. If you would like him to speak first, or is that what you're asking?
Yep.
Yes.
So so with that, we will open the public hearing and we'll start out with Trevor's presentation. So Trevor, you have the floor and introduce yourself to Lowell and then uh, work with Randy if you need to facilitate any slides or anything like that. One other question for the technical group. Should I turn my mic off while other people are speaking or just leave it live?
We're just gonna ask Trevor to turn his mic on. It's on, you're right.
Trevor Boland, thirty-four twenty Mall Drive. Eau Claire, Wisconsin. Thank you, Chairman Pelteer and Planet Commission. The city of Menominee has invested significant resources and energy in assessing the housing gap and needs. There were a series of community meetings in twenty twenty to define and validate the need for housing along with conceptual plans for future vacant land and types of housing. The housing supply in Menominee is insufficient to meet current needs and demands in every income category and housing type. Estover Terrace is a hundred and thirty-six unit multifamily development, which will consist of five eight-plexes, two-story buildings. Eight twelve-plexes, two-story buildings, fourteen twin homes and six single-family homes. The project would develop infill land that was certified as an opportunities zone in two thousand and seven, in which to stimulate development. The Blimry Platt and Site Plan attempted to be compatible to surrounding neighbors by a single-family and twin homes on the west side of the Seventeenth Street and Eleventh Avenue and transition to multifamily on the east side of development. Multiple access points exist to minimize impact of additional traffic. And stub to the south of the property line to connect to Darlin Road per the city of Menominee's strategic development plan. The project will be a multi-year project in phase to ensure supply does not outpace demand and leverage multifamily units for the benefit of the twin homes and single family. Estover Terrace provides affordable housing in the proper. The Department of Housing and Urban Development defines affordable housing as total housing and related expenses that comprise no more than thirty percent of gross, gross household income. Households spending more than thirty percent are considered cost burdened and households spending more than fifty percent are considered severely cost burdened. Affordable housing is income of households earning at or below eighty percent of the area of median income. Otherwise, known as AMI. Per U.S. Census, the AMI for Dunn County is fifty-six thousand two sixty-eight. Albeit, this project does not meet the house needs of extremely low income or very low income, which is difficult to achieve without a private, public partnership. At the proposed market rents, Estover Terrace multifamily units will be fulfilling housing for low income, also known as income insecure, and moderate income, also known as workforce housing, at twenty-nine point four one percent and a hundred percent respectively. Estover Terrace will offer amenities to be located in the Conservancy area, north area of development. Tenementally consisting of dog park with activity agility stations, walking paths, gaga pits, fitness nodes, half-court basketball playground, firing and outdoor grill area. Actual amenities subject to change. The developer has expressed, expressed their willingness in which to meet with local neighbors to explain and answer questions pertaining to the development. Two meetings were held with concerned neighbors by in-person and Zoom with Council Ryland Erdman on June eighth and June seventeenth. The center of discussion, uh, the unplanted land should remain as R-one in its entirety. During a meeting prior, prior this year with the Menominee City Council on January sixth, it was noted during that presentation that the city proper has a hundred and sixty-one vacant plotted lots and thirteen hundred and thirty-eight vacant unplanted lots. Currently, per the Realtors Association of Northwest Wisconsin, there are thirty lots listed for sale. In the last twelve months, seven parcels have sold indicating the city of Menominee has the supply of approximately four years and three months. Based on the aforementioned, it would be difficult for a single-family home developer without a single-family construction company to develop to strike a land when I don't, when there's only an absorption rate of seven lots per, per year. The city of Menominee has multiple plotted vacant lots that could be developed, number two. There are not any vacant multifamily lots that are available for sale, especially land that would accommodate a larger development project. The majority of multifamily zone lots are already built on. Per Realtor Association of Northwest Wisconsin, there are only six lots, of which all six were zoned only for duplexes R-four. One of the listings was two point four acres listed by Drive Realty, which is just directly north of the development. A quick comparison, the city of Menominee versus light communities, River Falls and Chippel Falls. Being either a large manufacturing or university presence. Illustrates the lag that is occurring in every type of housing versus light communities. The average annual building increments issued from two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen for Menominee, fifty-three units in total on average. And six single-family homes. River Falls, eighty-five total units per year. And fifty-seven single-family homes. Chippel Falls, eighty total units per year on average. And fifteen single-family homes per year on average. Per Momentum West org dot org and the Dunn County Economic Development Corporation, there are nineteen hundred and eighty-eight employees that commute daily to Menominee. I think this expresses the need for housing in the city. I will continue to be available for questions and I'm willing to discuss further with concerned citizens as for your support and motion to approve the general development plan and rezon request for Estover Terrace and referral to the City Council. Respectfully, Trevor Boland, Menominee Development.
Okay, thank you, Trevor. And now we will move to the public participation part of public hearing. And so that everyone gets oriented to how it's gonna go, we'll make the first offer to the public here in the room. And then we'll take one from here in the room and then we'll quote in and out. So is there a member of the public here in the room who wishes to speak? Okay, we have one. So make your way to the podium. Introduce yourself for the record to Lowell and then after that, we will, and if they could sign in up there. Okay, and yes, as we usually do, there's a sign-in sheet up front.
Hello, my name is Tony Spagnuelli.
Tony, you may have to be a little closer to the mic and just a little louder because you're
My name is Tony Spagnuelli. I represent my mom, who's Barbara Spagnuelli, at nine eighteen Sixteenth Street. Her house fronts on Sixteenth Street and the backyard is Seventeenth Street. So.
Just a second, Tony.
Sure.
Oh, are we good? Okay, so now we're rolling. Go ahead.
The way this is gonna connect into our neighborhood is gonna buy, gonna extremely change that neighborhood. According to, I don't, I didn't catch the total, hundred and fifty-six units possibly. So hundred and fifty-six units. Two people per unit, two cars per unit possibly, maybe even more. That's three hundred vehicles and two access points. And one of those access points is through my mother's neighborhood. I understand the need for housing. My wish would be to, you know, so I'd have no issue with single-family. Even duplexes, but twelve, you know, eight multiplexes and five eight-plexes. You know, I've got an issue. It's gonna totally change that area. And, and I don't think it'll change it for, for the good. I did talk to um, Mr. Mr. Lowell today and he explained to me the quality of structures that are going up. And he said, similar to Nicholas Drive, which I checked it out and they are nice. They're nice structures. But where you're connecting in is gonna be very tough on that neighborhood and I'm gonna have to be against it. You alluded to maybe there's other access points potentially than just the two Seventeenth Street and Eleventh Street. Is that true? Is there some other point where oh, we can't do that?
Or you can raise the question, but we can't go back and forth.
Okay, I understand. I'm sorry. That's, that's all I have for you. Thank you for your time. Appreciate your service.
Okay, thank you, Tony. So now we will go to Zoom and Randy will bring in the first person on his own list.
So I'm seeing a Jean Foley. Uh, we are gonna move you to allow to talk. If I got the name right.
That's right.
You, you were on live, so you can go ahead with your name and address, please.
Um, am I on video too or just audio?
You're just audio.
Is there an option to do video?
Uh, no, ma'am, just audio.
Okay. All right. Um, my name is Jean Foley. I live at nine thirteen Fifteenth Street Southeast in Menominee. And I was on the neighborhood Zoom meeting last Wednesday.
Ma'am, Lowell, are we good? Okay, Lowell's good with the, with the sign-in. So, okay, you have the floor.
Okay, I'll start over.
Sure.
Hello? Yes. Okay. Um, my name is Jean Foley. I live at nine thirteen Fifteenth Street Southeast in Menominee. And I was on the neighborhood Zoom meeting last Wednesday, June seventeenth, with the developer Trevor Boland. That was facilitated by City Councilperson Ryland Erdman. So I'm familiar with the updated details of the plan. There were twenty-some of us local neighborhood residents participating on that Zoom call. And all of us expressed major concerns about the plan. Two major concerns were, first of all, the rezoning from single-family residential to multi-unit housing. The plan proposes a hundred and fifty multi-unit uh, apartments in two eight and twelve-plexes and just sing, six single-family homes. And again, this is currently zoned, single-family residential. Um, another major concern of those of us in the area neighborhoods is the proposed construction of a thru street from Eleventh Avenue to Seventeenth Street. This street would connect the busy Twenty-first Street by the middle school with Seventeenth Street, um, via Eleventh Avenue and the newly constructed street. Uh, from Seventeenth Street to get downtown. Uh, the first left turn available is Wilson Avenue and the second one is Main Street. Both of which are uh, established residential neighborhoods with a lot of foot and bike traffic. Uh, the most convenient route, if people are coming down uh, the new street to Seventeenth Street would be to take a left at Wilson Avenue and most people will take the most convenient route. Wilson Avenue is a very narrow street, no sidewalks, um, lots of residential uh, single-family residential homes with uh, children and old elderly people like myself and bicycling and so on. And that creates a huge safety problem in the, in the eyes of those of us in these neighborhoods. Um, even if people went the additional block and turned left on Main Street. Main Street was widened in the last couple of years in another big construction project. It does have sidewalks. Um, it's supposedly a bike route as well. Although there are no bike lanes. Um, but that would be the other street that would carry traffic towards downtown or UW Stout. There'll be, as uh, the previous speaker Tony mentioned, there would be probably about three hundred cars from this development. And also at least a hundred cars from the existing Eleventh Avenue development. And probably approximately fifteen or fifty, rather, five zero from the newer development on Twenty-first Street, just south of the middle school. Um, and I am a retired math professor from Stout and to me that adds up to about four hundred and fifty cars traveling potentially on that route, either one direction or the other or both, a couple of times a day. Not to mention the traffic that will probably go to the middle school to pick up their kids, not by the long route around Stout Road. But if this new road opens, there will be a lot of traffic from this area via that new road, because it comes out right at Twenty-first at the middle school. And um, both the safety concerns from the, all of that traffic. Uh, Trevor said that he hadn't discussed that explicitly with the city planners or that they had no data on the traffic. Uh, but just the numbers alone say that this is not going to be a, a safe volume of traffic for those small roads. And um, I think that's enough. I'll I have a petition also. I was going to show if I had audio. But in the last three days, we've circulated a petition uh, in Menominee. It has in three days collected two hundred and sixteen signatures from Menominee residents. I sent that by email to the city commissioners and the city council and the mayor and other officials. Um, I wish I could call, hold up all eight pages of it typed so that you could see all the names that are on that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So now we will bounce back into the room. And if there's a member of the public here in the room who wishes to speak, you can make your way to the podium. And introduce yourself by name and address. Lowell will record and then there's also a sign-in sheet. And then after that's done, then we will start the five minutes per speaker. So.
I hope I don't make it to five minutes. Um, my name is Margot Hecker. I live at fourteen seventeen Main Street in Menominee. Um, along that lovely street where the cat, the traffic was calmed by a by a traffic project that just ended, I believe, in two thousand nineteen. Part of one of my fears is that that calmer traffic. Everything that the city of Menominee has worked for to improve the neighborhood and on Main Street is going to be erased, erased and broken away. My other concern is Wilson Avenue, which goes past a school, Saint Joseph's Elementary. And ends up, doesn't it go past here also? Um, yes, that, that's part of it. Um, I guess my, my main concern um, in terms of traffic regards um, the middle school and Oaklawn Elementary. I think, you know, anybody who's ever been a parent doing the pickup and drop-off at Oaklawn or the middle school is well aware, um, what a bottleneck that is. And how that could be a safety concern. Uh, high-density housing, in my opinion, and I'm not a planner, I'm just a citizen. Um, is not deserved. It, it is, just is not compatible there. So I favor R-one, R-two zoning. I favor the, the um, individual and the twin homes for sale or for rent with the majority for sale. Um, I think Mr. Boland has, has really worked on his due diligence. I attended um, two meetings, one a Zoom meeting and one a meeting in person with Mr. Boland. He's working hard. But now here's another word. So first point was traffic. Second point is vision. Okay, I think that the vision of one, two, three different types of zoning in an area near a school. of one, two, three different types of zoning in an area near a school just is a hot mess. Okay, it, it just doesn't work for me on so, so many levels. Okay, my third point is trust. Um, one of the people, um, participating in the Zoom meeting, um, last week was talking about, he, he lived on, um, I wanna say Hawk Ridge and I know that's wrong, but that ridge development and he talked about how, you know, this is where this is the development near the middle school where it's single-family and it was right next to, um, where a multifamily residential apartment complex was proposed and he, and he talked about how, you know, that was just, um, voted down just less than two years ago. So, um, that's it. Traffic safety, vision and trust. I wanna see Menominee develop. I really honestly do. I think Mr. Bowland is trying to work in good faith. However, his vision doesn't agree with my vision and doesn't agree with East Menominee's vision, really, from what I'm seeing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now we'll go back to Zoom participants and Randy, can you bring someone in? Just remind everyone, raise their hand again.
Yeah, so just a reminder again, the attorney's asking me to, to, if you are on a cell phone, uh, it would be star nine. That would be star nine on a cell phone, um, to raise your hand. Um, if you're on a computer, uh, just hovering below your name, you should see a hand raised then um, or under the participant column. And, and just one more comment. I, I see a number of people answer, trying to get questions and answers out there. We are not interacting on a Q and A in the middle, during this meeting. So I appreciate the questions, but we're, we're running this public hearing just on the, on the verbal presentations right now. So next up is, uh, Chris Recker. Uh, Chris, we've, uh, turned you on. You, uh, you have the mic.
Thank you. This is, uh, Chris Recker and I live at fourteen oh eight Main Street.
Go ahead, Chris. We can hear you.
Okay. A not-in-my-backyard objection is often based simply on the fear of change. We don't vaguely fear change in our neighborhood. Our objections to Estover Terrace are specific. Number one, this proposal is too dense, too many people with too many cars with too little green space. Number two, this proposal is not compatible with neighboring land use, specifically the eight and twelve complexes being alien within this context. The current single-family zoning designation laid across this twenty-nine acres is appropriate and ought to be allowed to guide its future development. According to the two thousand and twenty Housing Affordability Report developed and adopted by city leaders, Menominee has seen a five percent decrease in owner-occupied housing since nineteen ninety. There's a need. This twenty-nine acres is a place for it. I ask the city and the developer to be patient and wait to develop this twenty-nine acres as is natural to it. Owner-occupied housing, rather than rezone now in response to an eager developer wanting to break ground ASAP with a density proposed that does not fit at eighty-eight percent renter-occupied and only twelve percent owner-occupied in the proposal. Admittedly, there's a need for renter-occupied multifamily housing in the city. That doesn't mean we should accept the density of eight and twelve complexes in illogical locations, in my opinion. The Housing Affordability Report estimates over three hundred and sixty undeveloped, platted and unplatted lots zoned for multifamily housing. So although they are not for sale at this moment or may not be for sale at this moment, other site opportunities for Trevor's development do exist in the city. Why force a round peg in a square hole? Why rezone this? Resoning this acreage may be the easiest path because it's conveniently for sale and rezoning is worth a shot again, but at what cost? Many, many of the city's citizens, not just neighbors, will be negatively affected by this density. The safety of school families traveling to Oaklawn and the middle school twice a day, nine months of the year, is at risk on twenty-first Street. Trust in the city and stability of property values are at risk as homeowners in Dancing Oaks and on Tower Ridge Avenue see their expectations for compatible development tossed aside, potentially. When retired Dunn County Sheriff's Deputy Mark Devry made what is often the biggest investment in one's life by building his home on Tower Ridge Avenue, he trusted the city when it said the land near his had a future as R1 single-family homes. Mark did approve this message. I'm aware that the city's recent history of development hasn't seen rich interest in building single-family homes, but we shouldn't let the tail wag the dog. Interest in the city's Home Sweet Home Program is strong, I'm told. Developers like Timber Ridge Homes are successfully building and selling homes on the edges of the city, which implies a market of sorts. Please consider giving these healthy signs of interest in owner-occupied housing a chance to reach this twenty-nine acres. To conclude, I'm grateful that there's interest in developing housing options for the people of Menominee to live in dignity. However, a successful development is about the right idea at the right time in the right place. This development proposal with its high density and lack of compatibility is not the right idea for this twenty-nine acres. I do not support a rezone to allow this development. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, we'll come back into the room. Is there anyone in the room who do take a turn for the public hearing? There's no one else in the room raising their hand. So now we'll just give it to Randy and work our way down the Zoom list.
Uh, the next person I see online is Nasir. Nasir, I'm gonna turn your mic on. Um, you, you have the, you have the microphone, Nasir.
Yeah. Hello, everybody. Good evening, sir. Yeah, I'm listening to this, uh, conversation going on so far.
Could you give me your, could you give us your name and address, please?
Okay. Uh, my property address is nineteen zero five Dairy Land Road. The big plot next to this development is eleven point seven four acre, four seven something. Okay. And my name is, uh, Nasir, N A S I R, last name Ali, Sayed Nasir Ali. So I own this property. I'm looking for myself also.
We need you to spell your last name.
Okay, all right. First, S Y E D, Sayed. Nasir, last name A L I. Uh, in my opinion, yes, uh, there should be some, there should be some development happen into the society to get more good changes in terms of many benefits to the city hall, plus, plus, uh, people live around us. We should at least give a chance to develop something. So this, we are, we are all living here mostly in the cornfield. Now they are having lots of houses around here. So we cannot stay for, forever in the cornfield area. So I do believe I'm in the favor of development. And I think it should be okay, but, uh, as long as high density, yeah, people are saying like a multiple-story, this is a little difficult. So I'm agree with that. So maybe we can consider a little less density than the high-density apartment or something like that. So I, I think it should be good. We should go for that.
Okay, does that complete your presentation?
Uh, yes, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you for joining us and we'll move on to the next.
Uh, Bill Albright. Bill Albright, we're gonna turn your mic on. Um, you should have the mic now. Looks like you're muted, Bill.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Thank you, uh, planning commission. Uh, Bill Albright, uh, developer for the project. Also the developer for Nicholas Drive. I think we, we've heard some good comments about the Nicholas Drive, uh, project, um, over, uh, on the, just, just to the, to the east of, of, of this project and, um, I was also the developer for the twenty-first project last year that, uh, was not approved there across from the, the, the elementary and the middle school. Um, when it comes to, uh, rezoning, anything that's multifamily has to be rezoned. No matter what it is, I mean, all property comes into the city as single-family and Randy can attest to that. So when it comes to doing something for multifamily, you have to come and you have to rezone. Um, that's the bottom line. Um, you know, as far as the Oaklawn and Middle School, um, I've been doing, uh, development, uh, a lot in Menominee or in, uh, Menominee over the past, you know, twenty years. And there's always that fear of change. There's always that fear of, of, of density. There's always that fear of traffic, um, of kids, of safety and all that stuff. And, and, and we get that. We understand that. Um, we have, uh, adapted this development to fit within the neighborhood. Um, you come through multifamily to get to this development. We have tailored it and stepped it down from the multifamily to twin homes and down to single-family towards, um, I, I believe it's Wilson down there. Um, so we are, um, sensitive to that. Um, we have, uh, taken a large portion and Trevor or Randy can attest to this, um, for the, uh, the, the conservancy that we have up on top of the hill and the amenities. We've spent a great, uh, deal of time and discussion within, um, the office about what we're gonna, uh, uh, be able to supply there, whether it be walking trails or, um, you know, playgrounds or whatever, um, because we do wanna make sure that all of our residents and all of our developments, um, have a sense of community, have a sense of neighborhood, um, are well-kept. Um, and I think that Nicholas Drive over there is, uh, is, it, it is a very good model, uh, to, uh, to be able to see what we are capable of and what we do. I did hear, uh, somebody talk about a petition that came through and I'm sure you've all seen that. And technology these days makes it very, very easy to send out something, um, and whether with, with a click of the mouse, be able to, um, uh, make changes or, or express your feelings and so on. And I get that, you know, change is, it is a difficult thing. And, um, being in your backyard or, or, or whatever it is, um, you know, it's change and with people and change comes fear. Um, so I think that our track record, I think that the need with the Menominee, um, keeps bringing me back for sure. Um, this is something, um, that I, that I do feel is the best for the city. I do feel the density is appropriate. Um, we have done our research, uh, for what the need is. Um, we have done our research for the costs and I think that, uh, this development will fit well in the neighborhood and be a great addition to Menominee and, uh, and be able to, uh, provide the same nominee with, uh, um, the, the housing supply that it is in desperate need of. Um, it was in desperate need of it two or three years ago. Um, and today it's even, uh, more true. Um, so we look forward to hopefully approving this project and, uh, and be able to provide Menominee with what it needs and, and that's more, more housing. So thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Bill. And Randy, we'll move down the list.
I have a Joan. Joan Bugas. We're turning your mic on, Joan. Sorry about your last name, but I'm sure you.
You aren't the first one to have trouble with it. Don't worry about it. It's Pagalis.
Pagalis. Joan, could you give us your address, Joan?
Uh, yeah, I'm at nine sixteen fifteenth Street Southeast.
Go ahead, Joan.
Yeah, um, I wanna talk about sort of the whole planning process for the whole city. Um, I, I think it's really important that, you know, the city be planning in a really smart way. There's a lot of things to consider for, uh, not just for us now, but for the future. And I, I see that the city has a comprehensive plan and I have read through it and I was very happy with what I saw in that plan that showed that the city is really, um, paying attention to what people are saying now. There's, there've been some changes in theories and ideas about urban planning. And so these are some of the things that I saw in the comprehensive plan that I don't see in this proposal. And, um, so I'm kind of wondering exactly, I mean, I'm not quite sure how the city, you know, if the city actually intends to adhere to its comprehensive plan or if it's just a guideline or something. But anyway, so these are some of the things that I saw. Um, first of all, it said that the city would be encouraging developers to provide a variety of housing sizes and styles to meet the needs of all residents. And I'm not sure that this proposal, um, is doing that. I'm not really sure what the city had in mind when it said that, but all we're, you know, most of what we're seeing here, the vast bulk of it is these kind of blocky, big, um, multiplexes that are going up. No, there's no, there are no duplexes. There are no fourplexes. There are no condos. Um, there are no bungalows. There's no cottages. You know, I mean, it's all this big, um, blocky stuff. So it doesn't seem to me to fit. Um, the city also said that it wanted to encourage R1, R2 and R4 zoning over R3 zoning. Uh, but this zoning request specifically asks for a change from R1 to R3. So that doesn't seem to fit. And it also says that the city should require seventy percent of dwelling units in new some divisions to be single-family or owner. And that is way off from this proposal. Um, in this proposal, only twelve to thirteen percent would be single-family owner. It also wants to avoid, the city also said that it wants to avoid residential development that uses repetitive styles and colors. I mean, this, this development looks to me like a very repetitive style, you know, at least in terms of, of the multiplexes that it's putting in. Okay. And it said that the city of Menominee, um, may want to explore policies that will encourage more single-family housing development targeted for owner occupancy to bring the mix of its housing stock into more balance. I, I think everything that the city said there in that plan, I think all of those were just wonderful. Um, but I just don't see that this proposal is meeting that. I think it's really important for us to consider, you know, you know, what is, what is gonna be the resiliency of this city? Um, you know, and in order to get a really resilient community, I think you have to have a lot of diversity. And I'm not, I'm really not seeing that in Menominee. I'm seeing so many of these big, huge apartment pla, complexes coming in. And I'd really like to see the city doing more to encourage, uh, small developments. You know, and incremental and incremental development at this point in this economy and with this pandemic that we have, we've barely seen the tip of the economic damage that is gonna come from this. Um, I, it just seems like a really bad time to be, um, to be developing in this way, that we should be doing things a lot more incrementally and a lot more cautiously. All right. I'm done.
Okay, thank you, Joan.
Uh, next, uh, next up we have, uh, Heidi Wilson. Heidi Wilson, we've, uh, turned on your mic. You are, looks like you're muted, Heidi. And you are free to speak with your name and address, please.
All right. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank all of the council members and Trevor and the developers also. There's been a lot of time put into considerations for this project. Um.
Heidi, can we get your address, please?
Absolutely. It is fourteen eleven Main Street East.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So. So, some of the main concerns that I am bringing up with this project is not that Trevor and the developers are not looking at what Menominee needs. My concern is with any project of reality, the number one key is location, location, location. And when we're considering the location of this project, we're looking at high-traffic area that already has needed consideration for other traffic ways of moving traffic around such as stop signs being implemented, expanding Main Street. And then my other concern with that is, in this specific area, we have people who are already living here that are older, slower, and we also have a lot of community members that need additional disability and assistance in their moving around this area, including a lot of our school-aged children. And when we include additional traffic, especially in high-stress situations such as getting children to and from school on time and when we're talking about the community and a lot of these members and people who would be living in, in this development, they're going to be moving to and from their work schedules during these times. And when that happens, there's a lot of concern about people not 100% paying attention. And there's a lot of potential for people to get hurt. As I had emailed out to some of you, I'd also spoken with Menominee Transportation and a number of the school board members. And they had not had full opportunity to explore how this is going to affect the school district of Menominee also. We have a lot of investment in our community in the school district. We have a wonderful school district. I moved here from another community to be part of this school district and I'm really proud to be part of this community now. And I would like us to consider all the other members and pieces and institutes that are going to be affected by having such a large area be affected very, very quickly. And so I would just like us to keep in mind that location, location, location is very, very important. And I would hope that the developers could look at another area that would be better fitting for this type of development. I agree that Menominee does need housing. And I also really want to look at affordable housing. And when we were talking about what the cost of the living would be in these apartment spaces, they are very high in cost. And with that, I don't know if we're really moving affordable housing into Menominee. Instead, we are bringing up high income housing. And the last point I'd like to make is the neighborhood and development area that they're talking about is part of historical Menominee. These are housing in areas that people have taken a lot of pride in to maintain aesthetically the value of Menominee, the beauty and history of Menominee. If you go on the historical, Wisconsin Historical website, there are many of our homes that are pictured on that website. And people are keeping up their homes here and it means a lot to us. And I feel like the neighborhood is asking for us to continue to keep the aesthetics of the neighborhood. Thank you very much for taking the time to listen to me.
Okay, thank you, Heidi. Next up, Paul is, all I see is his name is Hearth, H-E-A-R-T-H. We have turned your mic on. You appear to be muted at this time.
Yeah, I have questions. My name is Steve Hearth. I am recent, recently moved to Menominee about three years ago from a rural
With your name and address for the record.
I'm trying to give it, thank you. 1711 Sixth Avenue North. Menominee, Stephen Hearth. I have recently moved here about three years ago. My question is, what are the cost of the units that will be developed?
Rent.
The rental units. Second question, what does it cost to put up a no-left-turn sign and add a extra lane for the school? And are we really interested in providing housing for families that want to move here, want to grow this community? Are we going to be left behind by River Falls, Eau Claire and other communities? We need to get on the ball. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Randy, if you could do one more reminder again. Yeah, just a reminder to the public out there. If you're on a cellphone and wish to speak, it would be a star nine. Should turn, raise your hand and we can see that. Cellphone, that would be a star nine. If you're on your computer, you should be able to hover over your name or down at the bottom of the panelist area and see a hand-raising option. Next one on the list, Mr. Chairman, is Catherine Dutton. Catherine, we've turned on your microphone. If you unmute yourself, you'll have our attention. And we just need your name and address, Catherine. Go ahead, Catherine. We can, I think you're live. One more time, Catherine, I think we can hear your mic is open. Your, if you wish to speak, now would be the time. Ms. Dutton?
Okay, Ms. Ms. Dutton, if you are having issues, just remember you can call in on your cellphone to the number that was provided in the notice and on the agenda. There are a couple of people that still need to speak, so you would have time to come in there, press star nine on your cellphone and you would have the opportunity to talk to them if you are having technical difficulties with your computer.
And then next up, I see Mr. Chair is Julie Bestin. Julie, we've turned, we've turned the mic, your mic on, so if you, it looks like you're unmuted, so if you could just give your name and address for the record.
Thank you. I'm Julie Bestin. I live at 1217 Ninth Avenue East.
Thanks, Julie. Mic is yours.
All right, I want to second a lot of the things that have already been brought forward dealing with traffic and the, the city's comprehensive plan. I agree wholeheartedly with them. I also have maybe a, a unique perspective because we lived on Whisper Ridge on that Nicholas Drive development several years ago when we had first moved to Menominee. And it's, it's loud in those units. Yes, they look nice from the outside, but you can hear your neighbors. As soon as we had people, we were there when they were still building and as soon as we had people moving in above us, we were eager to move out. My other thing that I wanted to bring up is that the issue of cost. They're using this term workforce housing. But, I mean, these are pretty expensive rents for somebody making an average or lower than average income for our area. My mortgage, monthly mortgage is less than the rents for most of these units. So I'm, I'm pretty sure that they're not really addressing our need for low-income housing. You'd have to be pretty high on the, the low-income scale to be able to afford it. I also want to point out that HUD and their home program has fair market rents for low-income housing. For a two-bedroom in Dunn County, their suggestion is $789. Which is well below the what? 1,225 to 1,250 a month for some of these two bedrooms. The, the other thing I wanted to mention is in the comprehensive plan, the goal three is to support and encourage sustainable design of residential development, including green building. And I haven't seen anywhere in this plan where the developer addresses the need for environmental friendliness of their buildings. Promoting walking or biking in the neighborhood. Getting ready to move to no-carbon energy sources. It just, doesn't seem like a lot of thought has gone into the environmental aspect of it. And I think that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Next up is Tamara. Tamara, we've opened up your mic. If you unmute yourself, there you go. If you could again give your name and address, please.
Sir, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Tamara Brantmeier. I'm at 1309 10th Avenue East.
Could you spell your last name?
Sure, sure. B-R-A-N-T-M-E-I-E-R.
Okay, the mic is yours, Tamara.
Great, thanks. I was not prepared to speak tonight. I was just going to listen, so I'll do my best. I also agree with many of the questions that have come up about this development. And I guess the things I would add to, I've got, I've had so many conversations. So I teach at the university. I have taught there for 16 years. I bought a house here in 2010 and it took me a long time. I, you know, I'm on a professor salary, which is decent. And to find a price range, you know, I bought a house for $130,000, first-time homebuyer. And it was hard. And I have heard stories again and again and again about young families, first-time homebuyers and the lack of homes priced at a first-time homebuyer range of affordability, 120 to 180, say. They get snatched up in a day or two when they're of high quality. And so I, I don't know what the pricing is for the single-family homes in this proposed development. I would say about the balance of, I think someone mentioned that the single-family home, Chris Recker said they're in this new development, it's 12% single-family homes and the rest are apartment buildings. I just feel like the balance is way off. So I think Trevor made some great points in his presentation and it appears thoughtful, but I feel like we need many more single-family and think about it as starter homes. Like if you're really thinking of what Menominee needs, we need green design. Didn't Menominee just sign up for some like, we want to be, you know, an environmental city in, you know, a decade or two? Like, we need to start thinking about that now. So single-family homes in a first-time homebuyer range. Thinking about the quality in terms of green design as well. Someone made a comment about that this is not fear-based and then someone chimed in that this, you know, change is fear-based. I think the thing that many of us local folks are talking about, people in this neighborhood is that I'm not afraid of having new neighbors. I would love to have more neighbors. We've got a wonderful community. This is one of the most inclusive, welcoming communities I've ever experienced. So I would love to expand our open arms, but I think it's the quality of how we coexist in this community over here in this historic neighborhood that I would like to expand on. And not density. So expanding single-family homes is definitely something I, and I think a lot of my neighbors can get behind. I, I'd love to see duplexes even too, but I think the balance, Trevor, is way off. 12% single-family homes too low. And then I don't know about who owns what land. I'll just say it last thought. Is that having the proposed new road, street connect to 17th, also not a great idea. We've got this proposed development sandwiched between historic land or historic community, excuse me, a rec park and an elementary school and a middle school. I just feel like you can do better than 17, connecting 17th. Like, isn't Dairyland Road a more, more of a busy thoroughfare? Like, I just think you can do better than that. And I don't know how any of that works. So that is the end. Thank you. And thanks for your service, committee members.
Okay, thank you for those thoughts. Next up is James Miller. James Miller, we've turned on your phone. If you can unmute yourself, there you go, sir. If you can give your name and address, please, for the record.
Fine, am I coming through?
Yes, you are.
Okay, this is James Miller. And I'm at 1414 10th Avenue East. You've heard some comments this evening. I want to say a few things as well. First of all, no, this is not fear. This is democracy. We just remind all the developers that make their presentations. You're not handing in papers to your teachers in college. The planning board and the city council are not your teachers grading your project. They are the representatives of the community. And this is the chance for all of those people who are acting as our proxies to find out what our concerns are. And if they're listening, and I can, I can tell they're listening. You understand, this is not fear-talking. This is informed and considerate input from the, the, the people whose consent as the governed is required. When I was in college, I had a summer job working in my planning department. I hunched over a table and I was the one preparing an update of the city's land use policies and maps. So I had to take my little planimeter out. You on the board probably know what a planimeter is and figure out all the acreage and figure out if it was for a muffler shop or for a soda shop. And I was told, check the city maps, check the plaits, check the aerial photos, but if there's any doubt, Jim, get in the car, drive down to the site, make sure your information is accurate. Because sometimes the photos and the plaits aren't up to date. A concern that I have about this project is the location. The area that we call the meadow. Trevor mentioned in, in earlier meeting that we had that in 2017, I believe he said, the city identified this, or the county, or one of the authorities identified the meadow as a priority area for development. And that struck me as odd because the meadow violates all of the standards actually found in the city's development plan, which says we want to keep a green zone around the lake and we don't want to develop wooded areas. We don't want to develop sloped areas. Which struck me as odd because the meadow is wooded and it is steeply sloped. So I looked on your land use map and I was right back in college. And I looked at the map, I saw several things. You have a code on the map, a color code for wooded. The meadow is mismarked. You have a code for slope. The meadow is mismarked. So your map shows an area that's not sloped, not wooded. And I can imagine why you might think, well, let's make it a priority area for development. But that information is not accurate. And I think some of the choice of the site for this development is based on inaccurate information. I would also mention, as I mentioned 10 years ago at a council meeting, that that map that you're using shows 10th, my street, going all the way through to 16th. It doesn't do that. The only way to get from 10th to 16th is to Batman it, throw a belt over the power line pole and slide down. There's no road there. So your map shows a road that doesn't exist. It shows a meadow. It shows a meadow that is sloped, that you haven't indicated as being sloped. It shows a woodless area that's a woodlot. It also doesn't show the wildlife and the other aspects of that space. And in the meeting with Trevor, he pointed out, well, no, we haven't done any studies on environmental impact. We haven't done any studies on the wildlife there. It just seems to me that the arguments about multiple family and, and high density housing, you've heard all of those. But this very, very specific site being targeted as a high priority for development seems to me to be based on an inaccurate assessment of that meadow. And as they told me back in my job, get in the car, drive out there and take a look and confirm that what you're showing on paper is what's in reality. So I would add that, and thank you for your time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for those thoughts.
And I'll remind everybody again that if you want to speak and you're on a cell phone at star nine, if you're on a computer, you should be able to find the, the button that raises your hand. It's near your name or at the bottom of the panelist side of your screen. The next one we have up is a cell phone, and the last four on that cell phone is 1360. That's 1360. We, we've turned your microphone on. Give your name and number, please. Name and address, please.
Hi, this is Catherine Dutton. Thanks for putting up with my technical difficulties. My address is 913 15th Street Southeast. I also wanted to spoke in opposition to the proposal. In echoing much of what Jim said and Tamara, I wanted to say to the developer who suggested that people are fearful of change, that the 200 and some people who signed that petition, I don't think are fearful. I think they have concerns about traffic and safety, affordability, green space, and high density housing. I think those are very legitimate concerns. I work at Stepping Stones. I'm not speaking for Stepping Stones, but because of my work, I know about the needs of the critical need for low income housing in Menominee and Dunn County. And I know this project will not meet the needs of the people that we serve, who more than 80% live below poverty level. And that's the primary need for housing that we see. And I hope that that might be addressed in some future proposal, but not this one. Thank you.
I'm glad we were able to work past the technology and get another person's voice heard.
Mr. Chair, I see, no, no, oh, there is one more. A couple more. Michelle, I see Michelle, we've turned your mic on. If you can unmute.
Hi, this is Michelle Hamilton. I live at 720 15th Street Southeast. I'm on the corner of Wilson and 15th Street. And I sit right at the bottom of Two Hills on Wilson Avenue. And so I've lived here probably 17 years. And so I lived here before Dancing Oak Development. And I continue to live here now. And I just want to say that with Dancing Oaks, I have seen probably a gain in traffic, double what used to be here before Dancing Oak. And because the way my house is situated at the bottom of Two Hills, people come speeding down a very narrow street to begin with, where if there's two part, or cars parked, you know, similar side of the road, there's barely even room to walk. So my fear would be with 17th Street being joined, what's going to happen to Wilson, all the beautiful historic homes that are along Wilson Avenue? And are the people who live here going to suddenly have sidewalks and curbs and lose property frontage? Never mind the busyness because we have so few roads in Menominee that go east and west. So that would be my concern from a traffic standpoint, and particularly because I live right on Wilson. But I also would like to echo what other people were saying about the rezoning of this area. I think we need single family homes, and as Tamara said, that are affordable. I have people coming to me outside of any reason to want to purchase my house because they know it's under 200,000. Right? And those are the kinds of homes that we need in Menominee. And I too teach at Stout, and I make a reasonable salary, but I couldn't afford much over what I have here. So thank you for your time. I appreciate you listening to our concerns.
And then next up is Sean Bohan. Sean, we've turned your mic on. If you can unmute Sean, and then just give your name and address.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. My name is Sean Bohan. My address is 1504 Sherwin Avenue, Eau Claire. I'm the engineer that's working on this project with the developer and with, with Trevor. I was also the engineer that worked on the proposed development a couple, well, probably about 18 months ago and stuff, off of 21st. There's a few things that are are kind of repetitious, obviously, with the, between the two developments. And traffic keeps, you know, being one of them that is, that is brought up. And, and I know that, obviously, concern with the middle school, concerned with elementary school further to the north. And I know that staff had kind of hit on like what 21st Street ends up being as far as like a collector's street, the amount of traffic it can handle. So it is one of those things that we, we definitely defer to staff and stuff as far as whether the road can handle it. We feel it definitely can. The numbers, I believe, are in a couple thousand for traffic per day type of thing. As far as going out to 17th and using some of the, the more local roads and stuff. You know, we're trying to end up loading this development where the multifamily ends up being as far to the east as possible. One of the reasons is obviously it butts up against multifamily development to begin with. So it ends up being a pretty good transition through that area. It also ends up making it easier for them to end up going down 11th and out to 21st, either Dairyland Road or heading up to Main Street or Highway 25. So that was, you know, definitely considered when we were, when we were looking at this. As far as, I want to talk a little bit about affordability and, and give you a little bit different perspective as far as costs for single family homes currently right now, just developing. If you're looking at something that's like 100 foot residential lot, which is a pretty decent size, or even if an 80 foot residential lot, costs have gone pretty much through the roof as far as construction. We have pricing right now that's between 400 and 450 dollars to just finish a road with full utilities in it. So if you end up having that cost, you have an 80 foot lot, that's $32,000. That's without land costs associated with it. It's without private utilities in the sense of having to pay Excel for gas, electric, that type of stuff. By the time you're said and done, you have a lot that's 55 to 60,000 dollars. It, it's not real feasible of trying to end up all of a sudden having affordable, single family hu, family housing with a lot that's going to cost you 60,000 dollars. So you, you end up seeing, and, and I know there's been a mention of developments on the outskirts of the city of Menominee. Part of that reason ends up being is that the costs tend to be developing outside of Menominee. And it's not Menominee specific. It's just in city limits with full utilities of sewer, water, storm sewer, is a third. So, so you end up having some of these areas that are developing on the outskirts, and you're getting some of that, kind of the sprawling and stuff, and they end up being, you know, homes that are minimum of an acre, that type of stuff. But the road cost to put the stuff in is, is a third of the cost. So you're seeing a lot of that transition kind of happening and going around the outskirts of Menominee. And, and not, again, just not just Menominee. I mean, we've seen it in other communities that we're working in, from Eau Claire to Altoona. One way to end up doing that is end up doing a lot smaller lots. I don't believe, I, I lived in Menominee for about 17 years. I lived on Elm Avenue West. I'm not sure that residents in the city of Menominee are ready for 60 or 65 foot lots. That's what, what is going in, in Altoona and Eau Claire and stuff to make things affordable. I know the lot that I ended up having was over 100 foot in width in our neighborhood and everything. We'd be probably having these discussions if all of a sudden a neighborhood or a development came in and it were proposing 60 foot lots and, and residents would be somewhat up in arms about how small they would end up being, and the houses would be in small, that type of thing. So we're just in a different time right now with some of the expenses and without having help and everything in order to partner with communities and that type of stuff to be able to end up getting some of those costs down. It's, it's tough for the single family right now. One thing I know that Trevor ended up hitting on it, dealt with the phasing of this development. We would be looking at multiple phases, I believe. Exhibits were put together, I believe it was maybe over five phases. And the multifamily would be developed, basically, I believe, phase one through three. The first two phases, we'd be getting utilities from 11th. We'd be looking at like a temporary cul-de-sac. We would not, at that time, be looking at going through and connecting all the way to 17th unless it was something that was mandated by the city and stuff. So we, we end up having a chance to be able to see how things develop. We're, we're at that, we'd have the ability to somewhat train people as far as their exit out of there ends up going to be to the east, going to be to 21st.
And stop there and let you move on to the next speaker.
Okay.
Thank you for those thoughts.
They had a time limit, Sean.
Oh, sorry. I didn't, I, I didn't see the hourglass on my computer.
And then I see Michelle up next, but she's already spoken, so we're not doing repeats on the, on the public hearing. So I'm going to go to Leslie Norris. So Michelle, you, I think you've already spoke. You, you have spoken to the group. I'm going to go to Leslie Norris. We are turning your mic on. Leslie?
Yes, can you hear me?
Name, yes, we can. Your name and address, please.
My name is Leslie Norris, and my address is 1414 10th Avenue East here in Menominee. And I'm just going to speak briefly because I was making a few notes when Sean was speaking. First of all, I agree with everything that my neighbors and other community members have spoken of regarding the development and concerns. And one of the things, when Sean was talking about the difficulty with developing affordable, smaller homes, is I want to just, just bring us back to recognize the times that we are in currently. And we are in major change in our community and in the country broadly. With the pandemic, there are a lot of our institutions who are, that are reassessing how they are going to be going forward. We do not know at this time exactly how our community is going to be impacted by the pandemic with UW Stout. Much of the housing in Menominee is taken up, the affordable housing, and I speak truly of affordable housing, is taken up by student rentals and student owned housing. And we're in a transition phase. We don't know what's going to happen in the next six to 12 to 18 months regarding housing in Menominee. Many of our students may not be coming back into our community physically. They may be studying from home. They may be living in completely different households than they were in a year ago. And I think that could potentially open up affordable housing for Menominee residents looking for that, who will be taking over and demanding that rental housing be affordable, safe, and efficient. And so I want to really mention that this is not the time to approve something that we are in a transition time. We do need affordable housing. And by that, I don't mean workforce housing. I mean affordable, truly affordable housing. I agree with, with Catherine Dutton. And in addition, I think that there could be a number of different houses on the market in the next 12 months that we can't even conceive of. I want to also point out that many of the people who spoke for the rezoning are with the development company. And they were either a planning engineer or part of the development, and none of them live in Menominee. So they are not who you are representing. You are our representatives in Menominee as the plant commission. And I want you to remember that, please, as you consider this project. And that's all I have to say. And I thank you very, very much for graciously listening to my opinion.
Okay, thank you for participating.
Michelle, I still see your hand up. I'm going to allow her to talk and just see.
But each participant, they only speak once in the public.
Michelle, you're on the mic. Is this the same Michelle we had before?
It is, and I've lowered my hand, so I don't know if you might have another Michelle. So I'm lowering it now, and I'm going bye-bye.
Okay, thank you.
So we will, we will put up second call now for the public hearing. We normally give three calls at the end of each public hearing. So we're in second call. And Randy is watching the screen to see if anyone else raises their hand. So.
Patrick Joseph, Patrick, we've opened up your mic. If you can unmute. And then please give your name and address.
Sure, absolutely. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Sure. Okay, so this is Patrick and Nicole Joseph. Joseph is our last name, J O S D P H. And we're at 1308 10th Avenue East. We wanted to be voices over mouse clicks, if you will, in opposition of the rezoning effort proposal presented tonight. You know, we moved to this neighborhood for many reasons, the historical aesthetics, the community. We actually trick or treated in the neighborhood before we moved here to kind of meet some of the neighbors that we would possibly have. And we are very happy with what we saw. We visited the neighborhood several times. We took our own measurements, if, if you will, on traffic, folks walking, riding bikes. We had a really great sense of community. Even though there are surrounding apartments, this specific community just really appealed to us. And so we moved here. We were lucky enough to find a home in our price range, in the, the affordable owner occupancy value, if you will. But, you know, when we heard about this rezoning effort, we really, it's not out of fear. It's, it's more out of concerns. You know, we drop off kids here at Oak Lawn. We drop off, we go to the middle school. There's already plenty of traffic going up and down those streets. We're worried about rezoning of the school district by all the excess population that would be added from these higher amount of apartments from the development, or, you know, whatever they decide to, to build there. With the increased population, we're worried about rezoning for Oak Lawn. With the increased population, we're worried about rezoning for Oak Lawn, for the middle school, possibly being shuffled over to other school districts. And and we really just echo so many of the other comments and concerns that have been spoken about tonight. You know, the environment, the wildlife impacts. You know, some things, lower property values haven't really come up, but there are just so many concerns on my wife's side and my side. We just wanted to to speak and not just be a signature on a petition or a mouse click. We wanted our voices to be heard as well. So thank you very much for for listening. We we appreciate the opportunity to speak at this meeting.
Thank you for joining us tonight.
And that's all I see, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so at this time, we're going to put up last call for the public hearing. And is there anyone who still wishes to speak in the public hearing? And Randy will run through the procedure one more time.
It's star nine for the cell phone, if you wish, and then just hovering over your name, you should get a hand raising symbol if you wish to speak.
Yeah, there's kind of, you have 15 seconds here and. Seems like a long time. It's only been six seconds. I want to make sure that the technology isn't horrible.
It's on, it's, we can hear him.
Okay, so with that, I don't see anyone else raising their hand on the Zoom screen to speak. So I'm going to close the public hearing and will now move to discussion. And are we good from my voice level? Are are members of the commission able to hear me?
You have two more public hearings.
We have two more public hearings.
Oh, we have to do the hearings for the others and I should read. Okay, so now we're going to move to a second public hearing. This is a public hearing regarding a proposed amendment number two to the project plan, amending territory of the district boundaries for tax increment district number 14. And if we can start out with an introduction, Wendy has the introduction for this one, then we will move to the public hearing.
The first hearing we have is for amendment number two to 14. This district is North Menominee, the new Quick Trip, Oak Avenue, that area, the mall is included. So that that's that area. There is a map in your project plan and appendix A that shows that area. This, I'm going to try to do this simply and quickly. You can yell for questions later. We are looking to amend the district to add some parcels into it. They're not, when you create a district, they must be a whole tax parcel and worth the time, but somewhere along the line parcels got added together. And now part of the parcel sits outside the district, so we're required to amend the district to bring those in. So we have whole parcels again. We're also looking to take one parcel out. That is where the Denny sits. And part of the reason for that is, for some reason, it was not being caught on the tax roll and the increment wasn't being collected into the district anyhow, so we figured we would take it out of the district. We did meet with the joint review board last Wednesday and they will be meeting again, but there was no initial concerns at that time.
Wendy, there's a.
Oh, there you go.
They don't see.
So the little hatch area.
They don't see it yet. Hang on, Wendy.
There you go.
Okay.
So the kind of gray area to the north. And this little triangle up to the right of that, those areas would be the area we'd be adding in to make whole tax parcels again and to make the correct parcels within the district. And then the little hatched dark area is the lot that we would be taking out of the district. So that's the proposal tonight and you have a resolution coming up and then I'll turn it back to you.
And this is low, maybe a couple of comments. Lots of this has to do with, this used to be the Vanderburg property, the Best Western Hotel. And again, they did break up their conference center, which also then turned into the Green Mill at one point, so that's the area to the east. Again, the area to the other parcels was again owned by all the Vanderburgs and some of that got broke off. American is in there and that kind of sliced out the part where right now Mark or Morgers is putting in, started there in the facility. So just trying to clean that up and to make that part of that district.
Okay, I think that's a good introduction to the situation up there. So with that, we will open the public hearing regarding the amendment two 1014. And we'll do the same thing as we did before. We will see if there's anyone here in the room because we do have two members of the public who have stayed with us tonight. And do either of you wish to speak on the tax incremental district? Okay, they do not. So now we will turn to Zoom and we will see if there's anyone in the public via Zoom who wishes to speak regarding the tax incremental district.
And again, it's star nine. If you wish to raise your hand on a cell phone or just hover over your name and your participants to raise your hand. See no one.
So as we usually do, I will now say second call for the public hearing on the amendment number two to the project plan, amending territory of the district boundaries for tax incremental district number 14. And last call for anyone to speak in the public hearing on the proposed amendment number two to the project plan, amending territory of the district boundaries for tax incremental district number 14. And we see no one raising their hand, either literally or virtually. So we will close the public hearing. And we'll move on to the third public hearing of the evening, which is a proposed amendment number three to the project plan of tax incremental district number 12, designating tax incremental district number 12 as a donor district to tax incremental district number 14. And with that, we will get an introduction from city staff and Wendy is first to speak.
Yep, Randy, we're on appendix D. That's the one we're going to do. Tid 12 sits out in our industrial park area. That's the Love's Truck Stop area for distribution. See the logistics, bills distributing up in that area. This district, we call it a donor district is the proposal. We are looking to donate funds from Tid 12 to Tid 14, which is the one we just did right before this. Appendix D shows some of the financials. Ellison Associates have put together the financials. That is the city's financial consultant. And they are looking to transfer some funds to Tid 14. We are looking at potentially a three-year donation, 105,000 the first year and then 100,000 for the next two years. You can see that kind of in the blue in the middle there that Randy has. This district does have a positive balance in it. And those funds would then be used to go to 14. If you want to go to the next page, Randy. This shows to number 14 and you can see that the balance is not as good into 14. It will be. But it will help to move this project or this district along by bringing some funds in from Tid 12. Tid 14 recently did the Oak Avenue extension and that's some of the costs that the city had into this area. And by doing the donation from Tid 12 to Tid 14, we are able to close out Tid 14 sooner than we had anticipated. And Tid 12 will be closing probably within the next five years also. So that is what the proposal is. And again, joint review board did meet last Wednesday to initially look at this and we did not hear any concerns at the start. They will meet at the end, oh, after council. Okay.
And now Lowell has raised his hand, so he's going to add some more.
And and just the the Oak Avenue project, when we got deeper into it, the intersection with Fleet Farm, Charlie couldn't negotiate better with the DOT and again, that cost us an extra probably four to $500,000. So this gives us the message, repeats that quicker and gets this district closed because we didn't, we've got a lot of asphalt out there, so.
What seemed like a simple intersection at the start, once we got the DOT involved, was not.
Just a note on 14, the Oak Avenue extension was one of the main things we had put in the original project plan. And so we finally did accomplish that task and that's why we're hoping to close that district fairly soon if we can. But we do need those funds from Tid 12 to do that.
Well, to do it sooner than later.
Okay, thank you for that introduction. And with that, we'll now open the public hearing for the proposed amendment number three to the project plan of tax incremental district number 12, designating tax incremental district number 12 as a donor district to tax incremental district number 14. Same procedure as we have been doing. We will first look to the room and we now have one member of the public here in the room. And do you wish to speak to the tax incremental district hearing? No, okay. Next, we will look to Zoom and we will watch to see if anyone raises their.
And again, star nine, if you're in a cell phone or just hover over your name or in a participation or participant list to raise your hand.
Okay, second call for the public hearing on the proposed amendment number three to the project plan of tax incremental district number 12, which would designate tax incremental district number 12 as a donor district to tax incremental district number 14. So far, we have not seen anyone on Zoom. And I will make last call for the public hearing proposed amendment number three to the project plan of tax incremental district number 12, designating tax incremental district number 12 as a donor district to tax incremental district number 14. And seeing any action on the Zoom screen. So I will close the public hearing. Next item on our agenda is public comments. This is a time when the members of the public can address Plan Commission on any other item on the agenda which was not covered in a public hearing. Are you here to speak to any of the other items tonight? This would be the time. Okay, in here in the room, no, and we will wait a moment and see if anybody clicks in on Zoom to address any of the other items. Actually, I pray review the agenda a little closer. There's only one possible item, so. Okay, so last call for public comments. I will close public comments and we'll move on to items of discussion. Item A, items of discussion refers back to the public hearing number three A, discussion and possible motion of recommendation on the Estover Terrace General Development Plan. So we're now in discussion on that topic. And the first thing we do when we discuss, when we reach discussion is we look back over the public hearing and we give members of the Plan Commission an opportunity to ask clarification questions if they have any clarification questions for the people who spoke in the public comments. And so first, commission members, do any of you have follow-up questions for anyone who spoke in the public hearing? Steve, go ahead.
I can direct this to Trevor, is that correct, since he's spoken? What is the timeline for the phases? Those phases, one through five, obviously you're going to start with phase one. Do you know what tentative timeline?
And just to clarify, that was Plan Commission member Steve Cook referring to follow-up question to Trevor Boland. And Trevor is making his way to the podium where he can speak and.
On that, yeah, yeah, hang on, the narrative. Down further. I got this phasing. Does this, does this help you? I gotta turn that on for everybody else to see. Stand by, Trevor.
Steve, it was included in the put narrative. I should have talked to, it would have been the supplemental. That would have been on the June 17th, I believe, but in in summary, we're estimating approximately 12 to 15 months for each respective phase. That's about all we can possibly physically with subs and everything else move through phase one being the first eight units. First five, eight units, duplex, duplexes. And then moving on to phase two and phase three, those those are 12 to 15 month projects to do each phase.
Are there, are there any guarantees that each phase will be completed? Or is this something phase one and phase two could be done and the rest of the phases just go away? Is there, is there any guarantees of all five phases? That's what I want to.
I think that's a conversation that the Plan Commission staff and developer have respectively of, you know, if you were going to want to see the project completed, we're going to want to complete the project, but probably should be written language as such.
Yeah, the the reason I asked the question is, you know, I heard some talk about you just want to do the larger ones and then the single family ones may drift away. I'm not suggesting that. I'm just wanting a clarification.
The intent is use funds, cash flows to help support the single family duplexes. To to be frank, there's not a lot of meat on the bone when it comes to homes. And the single family homes, we're hoping to find someone to partner with us as we go through to go, you know what? Let's try to knock these out a little faster. And that's more their specialty is doing single family homes.
Okay, are there any other follow-up questions from members of the Plan Commission? Mr. Crowe, Trevor, I I can't tell from the diagram here, does this include sidewalk?
Yes.
Yes.
One, one side or both sides?
One side. You may want.
Mr. Crowe, it does include sidewalks and it is one side.
I believe it's the north side. We're not bringing up the phasing.
Okay, thank you. Randy, just to clarify, I don't believe it goes, it comes from 17th, but I don't believe it goes all the way to 11th.
And and again, this could be adjusted as we get into the final plan, but it ends just short of 11th Avenue. It does go all the way, almost to 17th. It just, it does go to 17th right to here, but not to 11th.
Okay, somebody raised their hand in the.
David, go ahead.
Couple of questions. Randy, first of all, the the issue of an environmental impact study was mentioned by a couple of folks. Do we ask for that from developers?
The short answer is no. The short answer is no, not for the housing development, we have not in the past. And we have not, and there was not an intention of this one here. It's privately owned, they have to meet the D and R requirements on stormwater and land disturbance. But the impact environmental impact statement in EIS is not required.
Okay, and what is the slope of the street as it goes downhill towards seventeen?
Sound cut in the note, but I believe your question was, what was the slope?
What slope of the street as it goes down to seventeen?
Okay, if the engineers will take that one.
I'm gonna defer to Charlie on that as he looks at the map. The other one, we, if Charlie doesn't have it, we could, we could ask Sean if he's still online for that, that slope. He's looking at his map. I can bring Sean in if you wish, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, the quickest way to get that answer would be to follow up with Sean, so please bring him in.
Sean, we, we opened up your mic, can you answer the question on the slope coming from eleventh towards seventeen?
Sure, um, the slope that we have, it's just a conceptual design right now. But I think we ended up having it at about ten to twelve percent. We are cutting that knob down a little bit in order to be able to try to make sure that that we end up having a decent enough slope, and we don't keep it for that long. It, it starts to flatten out before we even get to the intersection where, where branches off to the south to the single family. So it's basically from the last set of twelve plexes to that intersection. So it's a few hundred feet that we would end up having steep slopes or steeper slopes.
Just jump in while ten or twelve percent may seem steep. We do have streets in the city that are exceeding twenty percent. So it's, it is, you know, Mr. Crop would notice the writing of a white cup it, but it's, it's not undoable. And there are a lot of community that have that type of slope.
All of my question, what screening or vegetation is there proposed between the eight plexes and the single family homes down on, that just off of twenty first?
Okay, the question was what vegetation or screening would be between the places? The single family homes, maybe eight or twelve plexes, Dave? Okay, Dave, I need a clarification. Were you looking east from the eight plexes toward that direction or?
Yes, the, the single family, well, wait, I guess it's the, the eleventh avenue that currently is a cul-de-sac. The homes there right behind it are the eight plexes. What, what screens them or what, you know, what's proposed?
Yeah, I can, I think I'm sharing the screen with everybody, I can, you know, again, this could be adjusted, but right now in the development plan, you can, you can see some trees here on those south apex tree here, and then a couple bushes. That's the landscape plan at this point. If that's the area we're looking at, Dave.
It is, thank you.
Okay, yep, we will keep going. Are there other members of the commission with questions?
Paul?
Go ahead.
Okay, perhaps this is more of a question for the city and for Cedar Court. On the proposal, it says that the density of the proposed development would be six point six three units per acre, which is in line with other proposed and approved developments considered by the city of Menominee. And as I'm looking at it, especially with the eight twelve plexes, I, I'm not sure if Menominee, can somebody help me out? Are there any other developments in Menominee that would have that, that type of eight twelve plexes or anything comparable to that within a development? That would equate to that six point six three units per acre? And is that a fair number for, as it stated in the proposal, says six point six three is in line with what Menominee has approved?
I, I can take a stab at that, the, the, the density, I don't think is out of line. You know, normal residential development, if you're laying it out, you're looking at trying to get four homes per acre. So six point six with apartments is out of line. That does not include, I believe, the, the open space or the green space that's aside. I think I can drop the five something with that. The, the four or the eight twelve plexes, you know, I'm trying to think off the top of my head. We do have some areas that are dense, and Chef Check just put in nineteen one bedroom units in North Menominee. Wilson, oh, you got.
Well, up by Jeff, Ridgewood, left Ridgewood Heights, they just put in, what, four or six eights up there past few years? And then some four plexes, so that would be something, something fairly comparable, maybe then.
Okay, it just seemed like that if you're gonna compare, it seems like eight twelve plexes is a, something above and beyond what Menominee has approved in the past. And then also the five point eight one acres of green space meets the requirement of fifteen percent of the total gross land. Now, that five point eight one, is that a lot of that taken up by the area to the north there, which is the, the proposed play areas and can't read it, what says ball, ball or ball fields or whatever? Or is, is that five point eight one acres kinda spread out throughout that proposed development?
I believe it's all in that area, but what they're counting is all in that one area.
Just that one area, so there's the amount of opens, the amount of open space within the development, especially within the twelve plexes, it seems to be kind of limited.
Yes. Okay, we've got a couple members of city staff that have additional information. Wendy has some, oh, okay, and then Randy, oh, we've, we've covered it? Okay, everybody had the same information, so we had a lot of hands flying here that people wanted to join the discussion.
Dave's got, Dave has, Dave has his hands up on there.
Okay, Dave, go ahead.
He's muted, Dave, you're muted.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot to take my hand down.
Technology. Okay, so.
I have a question. Um, you know, we had a lot of talk about density from the citizens in the area that came to spoke tonight. I was wondering if the developer, I don't like density either. We had this developmental here by my place, and we went back and forth to that developer and got it down a little bit. I'm just wondering, would this developer be willing to decrease the twelve plexes down to eight plexes? And, you know, remove thirty six unit?
They have to make that as a form of a recommendation, but if they're.
So if you want me to make a motion to recommend this to the city council with the stipulation that the twelve plexes be reduced to eight plexes? Would that be upper motion?
I don't wanna get ahead of the developer on.
Explain that what was possible, he wasn't asking for a motion yet this time.
Okay.
Um, Jeff, on your reduction there, wouldn't the.
Thirty two.
Thirty two, same answer.
And Lee's got his hand up.
Okay, thanks, Randy, Lee, go ahead.
Yeah, Jeff beat me to the punch on that one. The only thing that rebarries me about this is the twelve plexes. And I think if that those units, those, what they're eight units, could be reduced down to to eight, I'd be much more happy with this. You hear the comments, you hear the comments from the community, and I can understand where they're coming from. But also, we had the meetings in January, those three meetings on housing. We really need to do something, and I think that might be one way to, to cut down some of the controversy on this.
Okay, um, do a good job moderating the meeting there. But are there any more clarification questions first? If not, then we'll move to the discussion. So that is my fault that things got a little confused. Are there any more follow up, Steve is saying?
And this will probably be more for Cedar Court, but they talked about the, a lot of the traffic perhaps going to Main and Wilson Street. I don't know if there's been any traffic calls done. I guess my question is, is there capacity to be increased traffic on those two streets? I don't know if you have the answer or not.
Uh, I've got an opinion. We, we did look today, Randy and I and Wendy had talked earlier, and I pulled out from the Institute of Transportation Engineers trip generation of the seventh edition. And what they basically recommended, and I think we've talked about this at Plan Commission before, the single family houses generate about ten trips per day. Uh, and then apartments, they're recommending are six to seven trips per day. There's usually probably slightly less family size in apartments. Uh, so I just ran those numbers based on using the seven and the ten. And with the hundred and fifty five units, it comes up to one thousand one hundred trips per day. If you have two, and again, their destinations, where they're going. If they're renting in the apartments and working in the tech park or the industrial park, probably all heading down to twenty first Avenue. If they're working in North Menominee, going south, they're probably going to seventeen. So if you split that fifty fifty, that's, you know, five, five hundred and fifty vehicles per day on roads, it's a guess where, how they would split out. We had talked, and I think Randy has a, a map showing in our, in our comp plans, we looked at trying to get connecting roads. And so if we would add, I know we talked about trying to get a road out to J. That's kind of their layout of their single family lays that out. You know, and so you'd add a third one, that could, and again, I don't think it'd be probably an even one third, one third split. But it would probably lower the traffic between on roads between three hundred to four hundred and fifty vehicles per day per road. So the more network of roads that we have or grid that we have, the more we disperse the traffic. Randy just put up from, I believe you got that from the comp plan.
From the comp plan, so this is looking at our future roads. This was done, I think this is six sixteen. So this is the point seventeenth here, this is eleventh avenue. So, you know, back then in the comp plan, we were looking at some connectivity coming this way and also getting to Dairyland. And as you see in the general plan that the developer submitted, we've already requested for that right away to go to the south to facilitate this growth if this does develop. So again, trying to give more options, more nodes for that traffic to disperse depending on the direction. But over a thousand vehicles a day is what we're looking at for
coming, coming out of that.
Out of that development, the new growth.
Okay, any more factual questions to be gathered? So now would be time to move to the traditional discussion portion of Mr. Crop.
I'm gonna go first, if I might, Mr. Chairman, this is Dennis Crop, for those who are zooming. I would be the one who would probably be the most impacted because my house is on Sixteenth Street and the backyard, but on Seventeenth Street. But I've gone around town on my bicycle in the last few days and taken a look at some of the other developments around town. If you can let your mind wander right behind the hospital to the north of the hospital and east of the Lions Church. There are six, uh, four plexes in there, for example. So there's twenty four units there, right across the street from them are about six apartment buildings. They all seem to be about six plexes or so. Around the corner, there are a number of other apartments. So my little curbside count came to about a hundred and twenty some units in that one area. And I bicycled through there all the time, and I don't think the traffic is, is bad, even though with the hospital there, I, I've never felt in danger. People are worried about the effect on, on single family houses. There are some very nice single family houses in there. I don't think that there, the value of those has been affected at all by the amount of traffic in there. If you let your mind think all the way up on Wilson Street to the north part of town, there are several trailer parks in there, there's also Northern Meadows. I don't know how many apartments are, are in there, but there's quite a few. I have a friend who lives in one of the apartments, and I don't think the traffic is that bad. I never have any trouble getting in and out of that area. She's never complained about any of the, the traffic in there. So I don't think that traffic is gonna be nearly as bad as what, what people think. Our goal for all the years that I've been on the Plan Commission is to talk about fill in. And this seems like a perfect opportunity rather than extending the city limits, going outside and having to extend the city utilities, the water and sewer to outside the city limit. This seemed like a perfect, perfect opportunity to use what's inside the, the city, the utilities are already there. Some people, the other one I'd like, the other comment I'd like to make is, other place I'd like to is the development that they've done on Nichols Drive. I ride bike through there virtually every single day. And I watched it from the very beginning when they started out with a couple of units. And then the next year, they would add a couple more and a couple more. I didn't think they ever fill up, but they have. And I'm guessing there's about eighty units in there altogether, some eight plexes, some triplexes, some twin homes. And I think it looks very, very nice. They've done a good job with the siding, it's, it's all different colors, but it all matches. They've got a decorative brick on the outside that I think is very attractive. They have one, there's services in there twice a week, mowing and tending. They planted some very nice trees, it's gonna take a little while for it to develop. And if the engineer is listening, if this development goes through, don't plant all maple trees, please. Plant some other kind of trees. Anyway, uh, my conclusion is, in, in thinking about this, I think I'm in favor of it. But I think the twelve units are too large. So if you're ready, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we forward this in a favorable way, but eliminate the twelve units and make them eight units. That would reduce it to, I think, a hundred and twenty three from a hundred and fifty five.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crop. Yes, I think that's an appropriate motion, properly formed and right. So Lowell is writing it down, and once he's got that written down. Okay, Lee has his hand up.
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
You beat me to the punch, Lee.
The old guy go win once in a while.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor made and seconded to favorably recommend the development with the change of the twelve unit apartments being covered. Unit apartments, that's what's on the floor currently. And I'm going to make a motion to amend. And my motion to amend would be that we require full sidewalk at the time of development so that the sidewalk goes both east toward the middle school and west toward town as it does, so that there would be fully sidelined because with that many people here. So there's my motion, and let's see if there's a second to that.
I'll second that, Paul.
Okay, I saw Mr. Martinson slightly ahead of us, Mr. Crop, so we have a motion made and seconded to amend.
I beat you in pickleball all the time, too.
The only time he's gonna add a. Okay, so first, we need to vote on the amendment. And so is there any other discussion on the amendment?
So, so that would mean eleventh avenue down to twenty first, and there's a piece on their development right now that didn't have sidewalk on it.
I took it as sidewalk went all the way from eleventh to seventeen through the whole development.
Within this development.
Yes.
Do other things.
Yep, just through the end of their development.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Is there any discussion on the amendment? Is there any discussion on the amendment? Dave, go ahead.
As a member of the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, I have to support any increase walking possibilities. So, you know, hard not to support your motion, Paul. Whatever happens with the rest of the project.
Yeah, so we're just voting on the amendment at this time. So discussing the amendment. So any other discussion on the amendment? If not, now it's time to vote on the amendment. So all in favor of amending the main motion to add sidewalk, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? So the amendment passes and we're back to discussion on the main motion. Dave.
I have to weigh in and support many of the comments that I heard tonight. And I've heard privately from other people talking to me that the density on this, even with the reduction that's proposed, is still too high. Uh, this, this was an area originally planned to be single-family. It butts up on two single-family areas. We, we don't talk about what kind of pledge we made to the people who bought and built on those single-family areas. Uh, and here we are several years later changing what they expect. Uh, it again, just seems too dense. Uh, I'm worried about the slope to the west. Quite steep. Twin homes would be much more acceptable. They seem to be selling like hotcakes around the city. I, I realize developers don't make as much money with that, but it certainly would be more in keep with the, the neighborhood. I, I cannot support the motion.
Okay, other discussion, Mr. Crow.
Uh, I'd just like to add that the selfish part of me would like to see the, the whole development go away because you might have a nice quiet backyard. But the responsible part of me, the one who's looking out for the total community, has to say that I, I'm in favor of this. I support this. When I look at the kind of people that live in apartments, they're, they're not, they're just like everybody else. The ones that I see, some of them are look like young married couples, younger, most of them are family people. I see lots of kids playing in the, in the apartment complexes I go through. And some of them are people who are mining, who are just tired of shoveling, they're tired of mowing lawns. Lowell raising it now. And they want to be gone. Quite often they, they want to be gone for three or four months and they go down south. So the apartment living fits our needs very, very well. So I, I think we need to think about the whole demographic dynamic of our community. It is changing. We're not the Waltons anymore. We're not the Cleaver Beaver family anymore. Uh, we have a diverse population. That's very good. And I think we need to support that by having diverse housing.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Martin, are you raising your hand?
Yes, I am, Paul. I'm not, I'm not gonna fool around with this and try to raise my hand on the Zoom so I lose myself or you lose me. Uh, I, I hearken back when Lee met, uh, board member Lee Schwabs mentioned that in January, we sat through two nights, at least I did, of listening to folks from throughout the community telling us that we had employers, uh, people from various departments and health departments and stepping stones and all over the community, talking to us those nights. And I kind of wished some of them would have showed up tonight and, and spoke about the need for housing in the city of Menominee. And it's, and, and, uh, being able to rent workforce home, housing was very important. We're losing people that are moving away from Menominee that work in Menominee simply because they, there is no place for them to, to rent. And ideally, sure, I would love to see homeownership increase also, single-family homeownership. But as we discussed with developers and bankers and realtors and everybody else during those two nights, is that a hundred and thirty thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes are really a pipe dream for somebody to be able to, uh, build a home with the land cost, the improvement cost and everything else involved. With, if you're gonna have fifty or sixty thousand dollars in the lot and improvements, the real estate and the improvements, you're not gonna build a house that's gonna sell for under two hundred thousand dollars. So we're working or people are working on solutions to that issue. But in the meantime, we have to take care of our citizens in Menominee. And though we're not elected, we serve the entire city of Menominee. And I recognize that those most affected by these developments are the ones that show up and sign petitions and have a, an interest in it, have a more of an interest in it. So I, I realize that, but in reality, we do represent the entire city. And that means people that need places to live, that work out to the tech park, work at stout, work all over the place. And they cannot find housing in the city of Menominee. I recently went through a search for an apartment and I know that to be true. So I'm not, uh, I'm not just speaking out of what, out of hearsay. Density, yeah, I, that's all, that's always an issue with us and trying to develop. And I can remember developments, the one out on Cedar Falls Road where we had to cut back with the development. We said, okay, fine, but we can't allow you to have that many in there. So that's always an issue. And the other, the other thing that I looked at and I, I did drive around, uh, went up, I, I even walked through some weeds for quite a ways this morning off of Eleventh, at the cul-de-sac on Eleventh and walked back in there to, to scope out the, the situation, the area, what was there. And what, what struck me was the fact that how much land there is out there are surrounding this area. I mean, it's not like they're gonna take the entire development from Dairyland Road to, to, uh, Seventeenth Street and develop the entire thing. There is a significant amount of open space that is still available out there. So this isn't, this isn't taking that entire parcel from Eleventh Street all the way out to Dairyland Road and, and filling the whole thing in. This is, I don't know how many total acres are there. Maybe somebody from Cedar Court knows how many total acres are there. And though twenty-nine acres seems like, it seems like a quite a bit, there is still a significant amount of open space. And for the wildlife and the birds and the hiking and playing in the, playing in the meadow that, uh, so it would still be available to those folks in that area. It's not gonna take up that entire area. And the reason I'm supporting it is because I think we have an obligation and we do represent the entire city of Menominee, not just the east side of Menominee.
Okay, Lee has his hand up.
Yeah, when, uh, Bill Albright showed up and, uh, had the proposal for down there on Nicholas, Jill and I took a road trip one day and, uh, went over to Chippewa Falls and looked at the development they have over there in the northwest corner of Chippewa Falls. Jill was impressed, I was impressed. Then we went down, uh, south of the interstate, the State Patrol Office there on Ninety-Three in Eau Claire, same thing. She says, Gosh, this is nice. And we know what they've been doing here in town is good development. And I think, uh, they're proving themselves, uh, the housing is needed. I think I'd feel somewhat differently this, if it was this developer coming in that we didn't know anything about. But I think, uh, Bill and his partners have proven that they do a quality job and I think we need to support it. We need it here.
Okay, thank you, Lee. Uh, any other discussion? No one else is raising their hand and looking here in the room too? Nobody is. I'm gonna take my turn. I'm looking at the idea of putting a lot of young families. And I'm seeing here rental housing, people start out in rented housing. Very few people don't. And if you didn't, you're probably a very fortunate person that, of financial means. But who lives in an apartment? People just like us because we were all young and starting all months. So here you've got an apartment project which will have families and children. And it's right near the middle school. Perfect. Let's cut down on traffic to the middle school. They can walk to school. It's near the elementary school. Less traffic around town. So I think that this is a good use of land. And it puts families and people near many kinds of employment, near the schools. So one of the things it does is it reduces traffic. So I will be supporting it. Okay, any other discussion? Not, it would be time to vote on our motion of recommendation. So Lowell, could you read the motion back?
I'll try a motion that's made by Crow, seconded by Schwabs to recommend City Council approval of the Estover Terrace PUD. If twelve, twelve units are reduced to eight units, total development of a hundred and twenty-three units and this bad, and this would also include the amendment, uh, for the sidewalk on the way from Seventeenth to Eleventh Avenue.
Thank you, Lowell. So with that, it's time to vote on the motion of recommendation. All those in favor of recommendation, say aye. And if you're in the room live, your name and aye. And, uh, if you're on the screen, identify yours by a wave of the hand. So I will be voting aye.
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 Okay, so one, two, three, four, five.
Uh, Dennis, aye.
Six ayes.
Three for aye.
Yep. And, and the nays? Are there any?
Nay.
Dave, we have one nay. The motion of recommendation passes six to one. And Lowell, when will that be going to City Council?
Uh, the PUD is technically scheduled for July twentieth and then the following item also would go with that depending on what Plan Commission does with the next agenda.
Okay.
For, for hearings at that meeting.
Okay, so now we'll move to item B of the agenda, which is a proposed rezoning request from Trevor Boland, Eastover Terrace for twenty-nine point zero five acres. And there's a legal description here. Currently owned by the Golden Family LLC and Stout University Corporation and Department of Mission in the southeast one quarter of the southwest one quarter and the southwest one quarter of the southeast one quarter of section twenty-five, town twenty-eight north, range thirteen west, city of Menominee, from single-family to multiple-family residential. Limited multiple-family residential twin home and conservancy district. Discussion, possible ordinance introduction and motion of referral to the City Council.
We can show you the map too, Paul, if you just.
Sure.
Okay. So as Lowell said, the same area that we were talking about with the general PUD plan. The, the issues, the areas in gray are the ones that propose to be rezoned. If you can follow my cursor, I'll walk you from west to east. Uh, this would be a twin home rezoning, R four. This middle area would be the full multiple, R three. And this, the northern part would be a conservancy district. This portion right here would remain single-family. So it, even with the recommendation to go from twelve complexes to eight complexes, the rezoning request matches the, the PUD. This was introduced in City Council. They're seeking a recommendation. This would be on the July twentieth. City Council with a public hearing for council action.
And I apologize, the math did not get in the pack. We missed that when we put the pack together, so that's why Randy went over. Your ordinance, this is Lowell, the ordinance was introduced at the last City Council meeting. It's here for your recommendation. And again, it's just your recommendation back to that body and the rezoning that ties out to the planned unit development.
Okay, so is there any discussion on the reason?
I, I just have a question. How, what would happen if this, this property got rezoned the way that's proposed? And the developer that we just heard from decides to go away? And then could some other developer come in? I don't necessarily trust all the developers that come along. Would this, would this be in reverse of what should be done?
So the, the plan with the, the PUD would be approved first and then the rezoning would be approved. So they would have to follow the PUD that was proposed. So if somebody different came in, they still have to follow that PUD unless we remove it at some other time. And at that time, it would probably rezonate differently.
Wendy, I knew you would have, have the answer. Thank you. Uh, having heard that, I'm gonna make a motion that, uh, this be forwarded favorably to the City Council.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crow. That sounds like a properly informed motion. So is there a second? Awesome. Okay, we have a second from Mr. Cook. Any further discussion on the recommendation of rezoning?
And to Dennis's concern, they'll have to go through a final plan process that will also come back at least to City Council for final approval. And that types down things more on that plan, whether it's landscaping, the, the lot, and all such things. So they have to build to that plan and if they would want to come in and say, oh, we got four complexes now and, and you know, it said eight complexes, they would not be granted to build in.
Um, just one more note, there will be a developers agreement also because there's street construction for this project.
And they're not gonna plant all maple trees, right?
That's Trevor.
Yes, you got that. So with, um, yeah, Dave has his hand up for discussion.
I don't have a problem with the twin home part or the conservancy part. So I wondered, can they be separated and voted separately?
The motion is to go the whole thing, right?
Yeah, I, I, I think you could, but the developers are gonna want them separate. So I mean, they're requesting, you know, it's not pieces that they would do separately. So I think if you're against the, uh, full multiple, Dave, you should probably go against all the rezoning.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah, and personally, I would think what was introduced at City Council is a package which we need to, we have to sell. So we each need to vote our conscience on that. So with that, it's time to vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 So, F one, two, four, five, six.
Dennis, aye.
Yeah, so, so and those against?
Aye, nay.
One, one nay. So that carries and will be recommended to the City Council. To go to item C on the agenda, which refers to the hearing for the proposed amendment number two to the project plan of ending territory of the district boundaries for tip number fourteen. Wendy is ready to tee that one up.
Yeah, you don't do a lot of resolutions at Plan Commission, but you are required by law. If you're going to move amendment for tip number two, for, sorry, amendment number two for tip number four. Uh, you would approve the resolution that is in your package. And it has all the required parts and pieces for the motion to move it on to council. Again, the, uh, Tiff District will be brought to council on the twentieth, also up July. So I can answer any questions you may have on the donor or the amendment for tip fourteen.
Okay, mission members, any questions for Wendy?
Kind of motion does she need?
Motion to approve the resolution.
I make a motion to approve the resolution for number two to Tiff number fourteen, kid number fourteen.
Okay, Lowell is.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so we have. Okay, so we have a motion to approve, made and seconded. Any discussion? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. And well, just to be sure, any opposed? It passes unanimously. It's different when you do a meeting half in Zoom.
You're doing fine, Paul.
We'll get through it. So now we go to item D on the agenda, refers to the proposed amendment number three to the project plan of tid number twelve, designating tid number twelve as a donor district for tid number fourteen.
Covered the whole thing there, Paul. I don't even.
But I have questions.
Oh.
So if the cheese factory is built on Highway B, wouldn't that be in this district?
No, it's in thirteen, different district. So tid thirteen is to the north.
Okay, so not a factor. Uh, members of the commission, any other follow-up questions about this proposed resolution? If someone made a motion.
Where it comes from.
There's Jeff. So do we have a motion regarding this resolution?
Paul, I would move that we recommend approval of proposed amendment number three to the project plan of tid twelve.
What a notion, not a recommendation. This is a live.
You're actually approving this resolution.
Sorry, Wendy, I didn't hear you.
You're actually approving this resolution. It's not a recommendation.
That's my motion to approve the recommendation.
The resolution.
Okay, Lowell, you got the motion. He's got you. He's got you, Dave.
He's got it.
He'll read it back.
They want you to read it, Lowell.
Well, you don't have a, do you have a second?
No.
No. We're just.
Second, second.
Okay, a motion was made by William, seconded by Markinson to adopt the amendment number three to tid district number twelve, resolution number two of Plan Commission of the city of Menominee.
Okay, so Dave, is that what you intended?
Absolutely.
Okay, no, thanks. Thanks for being patient there. Your sound cuts in and out every once in a while, so. Hopefully, we got a opinion on that. So is there any further? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that is passed unanimously. Do we have any certified survey maps tonight? Okay, are there any other items which need to come before the Plan Commission?
Chairman, I believe that we adjourned the meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion made by Mr. Crowe. Is there a second? I second from Jeff. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? So it is. Okay, thank you all for coming out tonight, and thanks for working with technology. And you do find that, Paul.
Good job, Paul. You did a good job.